Next meeting, the three public library trustees to order, Tuesday, September 3rd. It's now a roll call.
Leon Call, library director.
Leanne Hammond, trustee.
Daniel Bridger, trustee.
Penny Peoples, trustee.
Tika Karos, I'm kind of observing today, but possible future trustee.
Shep Ferguson, trustee.
Kaitlin Brown, assistant director.
Mike Hanlon, trustee.
Tim Tracy, trustee.
Secretary Report, Minnesota on August 16th. Is there any questions or comments?
Can you pass it down to Tika?
Hey, check this?
I wasn't here, so...
Yes.
I didn't know, I don't know.
The secretary report, it was the June minutes that were accepted.
I have a question from, it's just my memory, I think. Town job description review team?
Oh, that's, that'll be under my directory report.
We're going to the minis, Shep, we're going to the minis right now.
Yeah, I'm really calm.
He said coffee over there. Anybody else have comments on the secretary reports?
Back here, say, motion, have a motion, please.
Motion to accept the secretary report. As made.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Guys have it. Form C none. Red Leaf Cafe, I don't see Donald here. Bill, do you see your favor tomorrow, check to see that the signage we talked about at the last meeting has been put up, we talked to Donald about some...
Behavior issues?
Well, get on top of it, as the kids come back from school, he came back from vacation, it's a good time to transition and really reestablish what the expectations are of that behavior and the lighting and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, and we'll do that, and I will email everyone.
Thanks very much. Financial report, again.
Financial report, as usual, we have the previous budget first, and I just wondered about the books line. Looks to be mostly either pay down or encumbered.
Right, it is encumbered, so yeah, you see, under our year-to-date expended, which is the fourth column over, we already expended fifty, almost fifty-eight thousand, but under encumbered, we've got two-hundred, almost two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand encumbered. And that just means that we do the huge POs for the vendors that we know that we're going to be buying from, so. So they're like pre-orders? Well, yeah, not pre-orders, but just, we know that we're going to spend one-hundred-and-fifty or two-hundred thousand dollars with Baker and Taylor. So, and then as the invoices come in, we just spend them against that those POs, so. It's not all that spent, yeah. And as you know, we just spend throughout the year. Right, and you have other funds to...
I think the big key is that there's fifty-eight thousand dollars available still in the budget, okay, right? So we have four-hundred-and-thirteen, what did I say, we have four-hundred-and-fifteen as a budget, you less fifty-seven, you less two-ninety-six, leaves you fifty-eight right now, so that you have at your disposal, when those POs draw down, we still have fifty-eight. And we can move for books, or we need to...
Right, and we already know that we're gonna, you know, we spend a lot of databases, so we always, you know, just encumber those, you know, each year, we know that's money that we're going to spend, and so on, so. So that, it's under, yeah.
Could I just ask, because I wasn't here, how much you may have returned or didn't spend?
You know, like, I don't have that with me, I can send you that information, it was, it's pretty minimal, mostly just personnel.
I think we were like, one percent, or I think it's one-point-two percent, for what those we heard, of the budget. And that's not to say, that's not indication that the spending that we did was frivolous, it was well played out, we have fiduciary responsibility, and so that expenditures that were, that did happen were meaningful and necessary, you know.
May I ask one question, maybe you remember, sixteen hundred dollars for communications, what is communications?
Communications, that is postage. That's what we pay the post office in order to go across the street and pick up the mail ourselves.
Is that preordained, that category of title?
You can ask Tom to change that. I think it's kind of preordained.
Okay, all right, well, there it is, that's my answer.
Yeah.
So make a note, postage.
It's not even postage.
It's a field box.
The question that I missed, the funds and grants. I have one coming on the funds and grants. So if we get Pratt, says TBD, so we have not gotten yet what is available for us to spend from that account, for periodicals, so I'm hoping by the next meeting that we can have that information and maybe, you know, do the Pratt fund letters that we have to do in order to spend that money.
Are we late, getting notified?
Yes.
Is it, should we, a call we make, or?
The Tasha is taking care of it, you know, new treasurer, assistant treasurer is working on it, they just don't have all the information that they need.
Okay, so, so it's in-house here, or is it... At... We've been notified, but Twitter knows the mouse, I think, though.
Yeah, we haven't known, known it yet.
And we wouldn't want to, it's not here by next meeting. What will do it?
We don't have to do anything by next meeting, I mean, we don't have to spend that money. It's nice to have it available to spend on the periodicals, but if it lingers for a few months or, it's fine. Or even a year, it's not that big of a deal.
Is it the, if we're just going the last four or five years, kind of like, just so we could know the plan on it, would we be getting a, kind of like, a good estimate, would we be able to determine that, is that too risky?
No, it's too risky to know because of the...
Faults, right?
Yeah.
It's okay.
Is that money held by an investment company or some kind of bank or something?
The town takes care of all of these investments.
Real directly?
Yes.
By state law?
Yeah. I'm not just curious in terms of...
No, no, by state law, I mean, it's, you know, if the returns are what they are, if we had, if I'd been working for us, you know, we probably would get, you know, different, but it's, it's state law, as told on this call, they're the ones, and they have certain agencies and practices or whatnot.
No, I'm just thinking in terms of getting the information back, if there were two units, like, an investment company and the town, the communication could be there and not here, it's here.
Yeah, yeah, I think as, I'll...
Yeah, no, no, there's lots going on, lots going on with that process, okay.
Just keep an eye out. Any comments on the Hatch Fund?
No, I'm trying to begin the year, and don't have time.
Anything, any grants in the offering for us, with the Hatch Fund?
There's a Watertown Cultural Council grant, but I would say it's possibly, but it's a very small amount, it's a hundred dollars.
Oh, okay. If there's no other questions on the financial report, then I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to accept the financial report? Second.
Motion is made, second on favor, guys have it. Chairman's report, the only thing I have, is a local friend of mine who was an author, originally from Watertown, and then translocated down to Lake Nedfield midway near here. Saw her come on the summer, he's written a couple of books, Crossing God and Coming At Tractions, Mike Bernard is his name. And said we'd be interested to do an author's night here, and he said he certainly would love to do that. So I'll get some information to Leon, and have him at disposal when these things come up. Let you guys deliberate together in the future, but this is not this report.
Great, thank you.
Director's report.
Just want to mention, Tika Karos is here, and we're getting to know the trustees, in hopes of becoming trustees in January. So first of all, I've got some updates for you, 5K, just a reminder that it's September 21st, and hoping to get more people signed up, which would be great, because that's our fundraiser for the building committee, and it does bring in a significant amount of money for the building, and in turn for programs for the library.
I have some, is anybody willing or interested in grabbing a few little pyres to put anywhere that you might go?
In my kid, so thanks, Mike, for coordinating.
If you want to run all the way out.
Remember, she may be made allowed to there, the gym near the arsenal, some people there, some stuff.
Thank you. Next is the maintenance transition, as I reported last month, we had a meeting with Lori and her team. Now Lori, who's the head of public buildings, and they are starting to take over the maintenance now. They've been doing some work already. The custodian transition is going to start sometime this month. We don't have an exact date of when she's going to take over supervision of the custodians. Lori does have access to our building accounts at this point, and I'm going to be monitoring that and making sure that everything is according to what we would, we would want for that, but just be assured that I'll be on top of that.
Do you, what is, has there been a protocol for, like, signing POs or something like that?
That's still, we're working on all those details.
That's where our control would be?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So what is the significance, or why, how's this come to be, really?
How's this come to be?
With the custodian part?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the town decided that they wanted to have someone who would oversee all of the maintenance of all the buildings, and all the custodians in all of the buildings, I saw. So that's, and it's been a long time coming, and they're slowly taking over custodians into the buildings. So they started with the schools, town hall, library, commander's mansion, wherever else there are custodians.
So what does it mean for the library in terms of...
It means that we will not be supervising the custodians anymore.
Yeah, but I mean, will we, will we still have those dedicated people, or will it be more of a free-for-all, or...
We don't know for sure.
Okay, so we have different staffing...
It's possible, when the, when the union contracts are merger, however they're going to do it, I'm not really sure how they're going to do it. We've just been assured that our building will be clean, and, you know, for the time being, we'll have the same custodians, but we don't know how that's going to work out in the future.
Can I ask you, the current custodians are public union?
Yes, town hall union.
And have you been writing, or at least provided the evaluation of the new custodians, or how might that play?
No, we're not allowed to do evaluations of custodians.
Today?
We're not allowed to do evaluations of anyone in a town hall union, as per the union contract.
So who does?
Can we make comments about the state of the building?
Who does those, for those people there?
No one, no, they don't have evaluations.
But can we make comments on the state of the building?
Absolutely.
That's what I was concerned about, is... That's the way it would be, right?
And you can rest assured that we will.
How many hours do the current custodians work?
We have two forty-hour custodians, and two, what are the, two twenty-five hour custodians.
And would that service, I'm assuming you think that that does the job? Might we get less manpower in or hours?
It's possible, yes.
But that's, but that's also, you might get more free hours. I think that's the hope, the economy of scale, than when they were going to find us looking out for facilities manager, building manager for all the state, all the town buildings. There was going to be a continuity, consistency approach, that the, if you will, the tasks that are required to clean a building, whether it be a police station, fire station, town hall, school, are pretty similar in nature, there might be some nuances.
Yeah.
But if you can work those out, and systematically get a high achievement for those rogue tasks, you might be getting some cognitive skills, and I think that's some of the things that are behind the long and drawn-out process of getting a town-wide, and I'm not sure Lori's title, but building manager...
Director of public buildings.
Director of public buildings, okay? It's just more than just, it's just more than just, you know, payroll services, it's HVAC stuff, and it's all that stuff. So there's consistency there in approaches and things like that, and meeting with the same contractors, and not having, you know, and not saying you weren't skilled, but to have someone who had those tasks forefronted or residente, to be the spokesperson for the town, so that's really the genesis of the position, and why it was so important for the town to get that. And this is to start the transition, and it's happened in all the schools already, took a long time for that. And certainly, you know, the union piece is a union piece, that's a side issue, that's something that can be dented on, but not, it's not really us the same.
None of us.
No, but what we can do, though, what we can do is say, listen, we have a hundred and thirty hours, you know, hours a week here, okay? And we had a really good clean building, okay? We expect the quality of building to be here, and we would love to see a hundred and thirty, but if you can do it in a hundred and twenty, that's on you, because that's her cost, that would come out of her cost, and I would assume, so along the line, those transitions would be made in the future, right?
I think one of the concerns I would have is the fact that most of those buildings, police is twenty-four hours, fires twenty-four hours. This building is open until nine o'clock, virtually every night, so it's a nighttime crew that's doing the job.
Well, no, we have daytime custodians.
But you also have...
But we have some nighttime people as well, yeah.
Just like the schools, they have three day three shifts, okay, they have a morning guy after the guy that needed that, so.
Well, let's see.
Yeah, I imagine if they go for that kind of economy of scale, the biggest problem, I can foresee would be responsiveness. You might not have someone available right that minute, if they decide to do it at a pool, right, and then they distribute people as they're available. I can imagine that's the biggest issue, hopefully that's the biggest issue.
And what was the second, that's... All we can say is that require is a certain level of cleanliness, and a certain level of fiduciary responsibility that we're just... If you're going to be spending our building money, we want to make sure how you're doing, and you're spending it, and it's going to be on this building, not somewhere else, and that's, you know...
Yeah, and...
Until such time that they, until such time that they start taking those things and develop their own budgets, and all that stuff comes out, then we have to fight for capital money, I guess.
Yeah, so, again, I'll certainly be monitoring everything, and making sure that things get repaired as they should be, and the, you know, to Daniel's point, responsiveness, Lori will hear if we don't, if we don't have someone here who can clean up the messes in the children's room, and so on and so forth, so yeah, we'll be on it.
Yeah, no, I think during open hours, we would need somebody.
Yeah, I think if they don't have that in mind, they will soon find that.
Dedicated to the children.
Okay, door project, unfortunately, nothing new, and we're probably looking at November start for that, which is not a good thing, but there's nothing we can do about it at this point. Next is the IT study. I recently found out that the assessment of the IT infrastructure, meaning computer servers, switches, et cetera, was not done for the library, and supposedly that is going to be corrected, so I'll keep you posted on that. And you also, as per the email I sent out, should be getting a website survey, so I would hope you could fill that out. And if you get that, and if you don't get that, please let me know.
Could you, why wasn't, why weren't you...
That's a really good question, that I've not, I've gotten the answer to yet.
Can we make an interesting side comment?
Sure.
There were these conversations all over the town, with people, about communications from the town. And I ran one of the conversations in my apartment, and the uniform result in that meeting, there were eight people from my community, was that the town is not communicating in a variety, in enough variety of ways, so that they're reaching people. Multi-modular, I think was the phrase.
Okay.
But what does that mean?
It means that if you have a, if you have a website where you have to go to it, and you have to push on a button, a bunch of buttons, to find something, and they're not clear, and then you get to the meeting, and it doesn't say what the meeting's about, you pretty well lose interest, you know? They said, there's a, you know, one of those boards that you enter at Watertown on the side, that gives the dates for, they pick out...
Yeah, the records.
And that's really effective, everybody sees it.
Yeah, that's true.
That's what they mean by multi-modular.
So we'll see what comes of that. Next is STV, and I didn't spell that out, because I didn't want that necessarily on the agenda to scare people. It was called Stop The Bleed. So there are these Stop The Bleed kits that the health department wants to install around town, and one of them will be installed here, next to the defibrillator on the first floor, yep, that's called the drinking fountain. And they will provide training for staff. It's a nationwide initiative to, you know, if there are critical bleeding incidents that, you know, for, to save people's lives, people need to be trained to stop bleeding quickly, so that, that's what that is all about.
Do we have this basic first aid kit next to the defibrillator?
We don't, we have it at all the staff stations.
At all the staff stations, okay.
Next is long-range plan, and Caitlin's going to handle that one, you got the memo on the...
Yeah, so you saw my memo, we're starting the planning process, trying to get a little bit of start on that. Right now, we're just gathering information together, we're going to be doing a survey. I'm also interested, is there any, if there's anything specific that you would like to see happen in the planning process? If you have ideas for soliciting information, once we do have that survey out, as trustees, if you can help spread that out and make sure people are responding. We love hearing all of the good stuff that our patrons love, but we really also want to hear from people that aren't using it, why they're not using it, so if you have any connections to places that are underserved, or places that you think would get us a good response. I was doing a little research, and I think our, our goal, if we wanted to get a really great kind of sample, would be around two thousand people, I think. Last, if I remember correctly, and I don't think we have the date on us, I think we got around five hundred to seven hundred responses, which I actually think is good, but if we could bump it up even more, that would be even better. But, so that's kind of where we're at right now, but I am really interested to hear any ideas to...
Would the survey be on a website?
Yes, it will be.
What sort of mechanisms were used last time?
For the survey?
For the survey.
We sent it out in the tax bill.
That's right.
We sent that out, it went out, was on our Facebook and website and all that, obviously, or in my stuff, we had it, I think in a lobby too. But I'm still, I mean, still, that's not saying we're changing people that have tax bills, you know? And those, I think, often are people that are more likely to be using the library, so I really want to find a way to get to the people that we're missing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Are there any printed versions available we can take?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, because I think there could be opportunities heading into the town election season, maybe to coordinate with some of the folks who are going to be on the door, or if they have friends or people who are here for the community, or people who just say, oh, I'm going to the library.
So the goal is to have the survey ready to go there on Square. I'm at XRR right now, so, you know, we're, I thought, we'll have it ready to go by then, but... And then I would want to keep the survey open, at least for the first month of the, of the next year, so that anyone that's participating in the committee has a chance to reach out to people. But I do kind of want to get heads around it as well, not until January, so we'll have some overlap.
Would the survey questions be similar or a little different than the last survey?
Um, I have very different, I was looking at it, and I was, I thought, I remember feeling very proud of it last time, but I wanted to, to open it up a little bit more, to try and get some really good feedback. I mean, I really...
In what areas?
Well, that's, I'm still trying to figure that, but I mean, like I said, I really want to, we really know where we're doing well, we hear it all the time, so we still want to hear that, I'm not saying that that's not important, but if we're going to expand our user base, and if we're going to really be what the community wants, we really want to hear where we're missing the mark, so.
And unfortunately, probably parking, and there's nothing we can do about it.
That's true.
It's true.
So, you know, as far as attracting a missing population, Square Affairs is a great place, I think. I would think you might want to take a walk around to some of the groups.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, like, the Boston sports, athletic people, that's a young, dynamic demographic that we tend to miss, okay? That's the first thing that came to my mind. So basically, the members of the, or some of the gyms in the area, you know...
What about once you have it ready, at the, at the farmer's markets?
Yep, we'll do that too, and we'll only have, I think, I mean, the next one, the next week, so I don't think we're going to make that, but they'll be October, you know, end of the year on Square.
You know where else is a good, might be a place too, is PTO nights at the schools, the first nights, the first parent-teacher conferences. That's another group of people that will grab it too. We get pretty well represented there, but, you know.
I remember when I was campus student for the trustee position, most of the people I talked to who don't use the library, I said, oh yeah, I used it when my kids were young, and a lot of the older folks I talked to, you know, retired age or older, kind of said, oh yeah, I use it all the time, and it was that middle, that, when the kids are grown up and they're in college, and they're not going to use it as much.
When I went to a high school informational night last year, they had it for like middle school parents and families. I talked to some of the kids that were, that were discussing high school, and I asked them, do they use the public library? And to a kid, and these were kids that were, you know, like, active in the school, and they said, no, never. So might be a good place to drop off some surveys at the high school.
I mean, do you have access, or do you have cooperation with the... I mean, do you have access, or do you have cooperation with the high school?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and we, I know for, um, I mean, Carrie, our team librarian, she does, she has a bunch of connections there, um, and we do go to a few different nights, I don't know if it's the parent nights, but other children's, like, parents have gone in the past, but I don't know what's on the schedule right now, um, but those are all, it sounded like it was just, like, a high use in middle school when kids, you know, don't have jobs and, you know, under these things going around, high school kids get pretty busy. Yeah, there's definitely a house.
And they don't have a big library, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, as, as unfortunate, it, it, it might just be the fact that there are certain, and I said this before, there are certain groups that we can't tap into, you know, like, no, you know, not for the lack of us trying, but they have, it's like, it's like, there's so much disposable time, okay? You've seen it in civic organizations, in rural organizations, folks don't have time to dedicate for these things anymore, and people are very busy in their lives, and the folks who aren't tend to be, you know, their kids who know what responsibilities, and older folks who have done their responsibilities, and so in between, it's trying, really trying to grab all of that, so, I guess, anything we can get would be great, um, but I'd also say that, um, you know, don't feel bad if you don't, can't tap into it because it's not, like I said, not for us trying, that's for sure.
And that's where, actually, quite a lot of those folks in the digital world.
Yeah.
Um, Caitlin, you wanna do current squares?
Sure, I mean, I kind of already, you know, I, a big, um, part of the Fairland Square this year is going to be community engagement and getting some feedback of some sort, so, um, the big goal is to have the survey done by then. Um, I also know that we're, um, we're trying to get some feedback about a lot of area of things, which you may be familiar with. Um, and we're, we wanna do so a little, you know, we have some of that stuff already, but we wanna test it out before sinking any big, significant money in seats, so we wanna get some feedback about what people are interested in, so that will be part of that, uh, and then we'll do the typical, um, uh, books that we usually do when we go to the farmer's market, and that will be different.
Um, okay, union contract, um, happy to report that we reached agreement with the union, it was ratified in the union membership. Uh, town council will vote on the funding next Tuesday evening at their meeting, um, and if that's funded, I will, uh, forward a copy of the memorandum of agreement to you.
So, that was, um, effective?
This past July 1st.
So, that's really good.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I know it really well.
Was it a treaty act?
Yes.
Was it just, uh, maybe it's the same thing, was it just one set of, uh, conditions, or, in terms of, uh, either salary or, or other conditions?
Yeah, I can't, I can't talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
We get the memorandum. Um, food pantry drive, uh, we did this last year, uh, we're gonna participate again, will be drop-off point, um, and that will be during October, uh, people can bring items here to the library, um, for the food pantry, and if food pantry isn't open that much for people to drop off donations, they can do that here, so we're happy to do that again this year.
How long will you keep the drive open for?
Um, I can't remember how long we did it last year, a couple of weeks, was it?
It wasn't a whole lot, sorry.
Yeah, I think it was a couple, two or three weeks. Um, and then, town job description, new team, Shep? Um, I was asked to be on this, um, team, it's, uh, convened by the personnel director, um, and it's a team with a consultant's help to get all of the job descriptions in the town, and also to, uh, look at the personnel ordinances, so we have our first meeting on Friday, and I'll find out exactly what we'll be doing then, but I agree to be on that.
So, that means you, you take in a list of all the functions that are here?
Yeah. And I think it's mainly going to be focusing on the town hall, on job descriptions, but I'm not exactly sure about that. I'll find out more Friday. Um, and that's it for me.
Old business, library director evaluation.
Okay, so I did a, um, signature sheet that includes all of those items that are listed there.
So, there's a personal survey and, um, folks review, and, um, comments as well from you, you know?
Yes, that was in the packet, yep.
Okay, so, um, so this is gonna be for this current year and going forward, um, the next...
So, what exactly are we signing here, I'm sorry?
This is the directive, uh, evaluation, where it has comments and...
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
It's what we've been talking about the last three, four meetings, we get a second completion, so we can move on.
Gotcha, yeah.
And that becomes, um, part of the personnel file, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, let's go around for the final signatures, um, new business.
Yeah.
Any thing on the new business, folks? Then, I'll go to, uh, request for information, I mean, do you have anything for request or information you need?
Um, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, is the GOSU code programmed back in the morning, did you get the, the folks to get it to...
Um, we're gonna have an informational session this week, and we'll find out.
Okay.
I'll pick it up, too.
We have, we have instructors, at least.
Um, not sure that we have this, are you, I think so, I talked to, I talked to Carrie, wrote it. Okay. And she said they have some, a couple of people from Northeastern, I think they're gonna run it, and she says it's gonna start, there's an informational session, I think it's late September, yeah.
Okay.
I have late September, I have, but, um...
Thought it was early, but maybe not.
I don't know, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that it's... It's gonna run through the state, and it's for sixth grade, eighth grade, yeah.
Great.
Same thing.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Glad to hear that.
Yes.
Any, any, uh, request for information you need?
No, I don't.
No, Shep, Blake?
No, thank you.
Um, I don't either, so, um, we get a, um, date of next meeting, it would be, uh, October 1st, or the 8th, maybe 8th? No, the first, is it Tuesday?
Yeah, October 1st.
So, the first, are we okay with that?
Yeah. Um, just in advance, I'm planning a trip beginning in November, so I might have to miss that.
Okay, go. Okay. I mentioned that, uh, Steve, under request for information, you missed it.
Uh, one thing, I, um, I think, yeah, so, coming to there, yeah.
I think you signed under, yeah.
Oh, I signed under the law.
Yeah, I was looking for my, I thought, so, that's new, you're, okay, but I'll just, um, so, I'm...
Yeah, there's those blue glasses. You can put an arrow or something there.
Yeah.
Can I get a, a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, if second on here, I, I, make the move.